No rule that says no.
I'd like to call the July 21st, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Mr. Pinio, do we need to go into non-public?
RSA 91A3 lowercase c reputation and lowercase e pending litigation.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of June 9th. Does anybody have any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept?
Move.
Do I have a second?
This conference will now be recorded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the June 23rd, 2021 minutes. I do have a correction on page three. There's the motion after rapid infiltration, that be up to paragraphs Chairman Murray, and at the end of it, it should say new beach instead of each. It should say Chairman Murray agrees, she thinks that there may have to do with the new beach ordinance. Does anybody else have any corrections or changes? Can I have a motion to accept as written?
Some move.
As amended, excuse me. As amended.
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, they pass.
I'll abstain, because I wasn't here for that one.
One abstention, Brad Herriman. Our secretary isn't able to come tonight, so I'm going to try to make sure I say as much as I can in the video, so she can record it. Next set of minutes is July 7th. I have some changes. The first change I'd like to make is on the first page. After Chairman Murray opened the meeting at 6:30, I did not do a roll call. I think that's just something that didn't get taken out. The next one is on page two, and let's see, how do I explain it? One, two, three, four, five, six lines. After the split, I open up the public hearing. It says, Mr. Pinio, we do have a bond for 1,500, and then you go down one, two. The next sentence, the third sentence down, it says the number is four right now that have permission, and they're talking CVLP boats, and I think we have five. Or are you talking about the two that are going to go into the temporary space? I just couldn't figure out what we were referring to there. Anybody know whether we should put five or two? Four isn't right. Four kind of sounds like when we were talking about hawkers and peddlers, so I'm not, I just couldn't make sense out of this paragraph.
I'll have that.
Okay, you'll rewrite that? One of the things that I would like us to do is look at the formatting. If you look at the formatting for the June 9th minutes, every time somebody spoke, they put a space, so it's easy to know where the discussion is starting and stopping. This one, they all kind of run together. Just my preference, I don't know where anybody else is on that. It's just easier to. And I have one on page six. And page six, it says approval, Josiah Brown Award, and I'd like the first sentence removed, and it should say, we have $43,000 in the bank. And then we talked about whether we should increase it. And on page seven, the motion. I believe that, and Brad, maybe you can help me with this, it says Brad made the motion to rescind the vote of September 2020 for 100K, and it was seconded. Were we doing that, or were we rescinding the $2.3 million project?
It was the $2.3 million project that we rescinded.
Yeah. Okay, that motion needs to be corrected. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'd like to open up the first public hearing. First public hearing is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, at 6:30 PM at the Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in excess of $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A relative to the donation. And I'm going to change this figure, since this notice went out, we received another $2,000, so it's $14,000 for the town of Wolfboro to install an EV charging location at 61 Railroad Avenue parking lot. And I would like to turn it over to Brian to kind of explain what's going on before I open up the public hearing.
Jim, do you have a picture?
I am getting the picture right now.
So the Energy Committee has been working about a year trying to get some destination chargers in Wolfboro. A destination charger is a Level 2 charger that adds 30 to 40 miles per charge for every hour charged to someone who's coming to visit our town. We managed to find a charger that has a dual port, that has the ability to charge either using an app, your cellphone, call-in, or use a credit card reader, just like you would any chip card. They're going to be installed at the end of the new train museum, Wolfboro Museum Building, which is the old freight building. And I wanted to thank the donors who helped us, and it is Maxfield Real Estate, care of Randy Parker, Good Hugh Boat Company, care of Jeremiah Burke, the Pickering House Inn, Avery Insurance, care of Vicky O'Dowd, The Yum Yum Shop, care of Spencer Samulon, and the law offices of Marbury &amp; Marbury, care of Reed and Philip Marbury. And we will have enough that we will be able to install the chargers. They will be fully funded for five years, and going down the road, we will actually receive some positive revenue from the project.
Didn't we have one new one from Swenson?
Yes, one more. And Andrew Swenson, care of the Wolfboro Car Wash and Executive Detail.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Selectmen, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I do.
Dave?
In the public hearing statement that we have here, it says to install an EV charging, I'm assuming, station at the location of 61 Railroad Avenue Parking Lot. And I got from that that it was one charging station.
Well, a station can have anywhere from one charger to 20 chargers. They do call it a station, but it is a dual-port station. It has two different charging units.
I guess that's what I was trying to go for, was on this sheet here of installation, it says two chargers. So I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not just a one thing station, there'll be two plugs, or cords, or whatever to plug to. I didn't look through.
Yep. And so two cars can charge simultaneously.
Okay.
And the town has the ability to set the rate of the electricity that we charge, and to set any kind of limit on the amount of time we want the chargers to be occupied, an hour, two hours. There'll be an app push to the owner of the car to know when their car is either charged or their time is up and the car needs to be moved. So there's a lot of good things we can do with it.
Any other selectmen have any other comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
Another question, just have to think of this. Brian, were these, were these charging stations going to be located? Obviously, the cars are going to have to pull into those spaces right next to it there. Are those going to be reserved, somewhat like a handicap space just for that use?
Yeah, the electrical vehicle chargers spaces are always reserved for the electric vehicles.
Yep, just so people know, it's going to be signed too and stuff, so people would be aware of that.
Yeah, we may have to put something in our ordinance that would allow us to do.
We're also going to have signage that thanks the donors for their generosity, because it's right at the beginning of Bridge Falls path.
Right.
And so it's a good location for them, for everybody to see who helped.
Any other selectmen have any comments or questions? I'd like to thank the sponsors, and I think maybe the Board of Selectmen should write a letter of thank you to each one of them, as a kind of a, that's very nice. We've, we're trying to get these chargers for a long time, and I'm glad Brian was willing to work on that, and we have it. So can I have a motion?
Motion to accept a donation in the amount of $14,000 for the Energy Committee to be used in part for the charging station project to install two electric vehicle chargers at 61 Railroad Avenue Parking Lot. The donation will be booked to Donations Miscellaneous Account Number 01-35080-150. The purchase of the equipment will be charged to a new account, Executive Energy Committee Account Number 01-41301-873, which will be funded by this donation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, at 6:30, to consider the following application. The temporary event permit for the Church United B Free Church, Calvary, Wolfboro, Meredith Village Community Church, First Congregational Church of Oscepee, Wolfboro Bible Church, to host a concert in Cape Park on August 6, 2021, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Is there anybody, I'm going to open up the public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name's Justin Marbury, and I'm here representing the Church United, this group of churches that are looking to use Cape Park. And so I think the application's pretty straightforward. We initially were requesting to grill and to have a section of Cape Park for games, but upon hearing that the board thought that wouldn't be the best for Cape Park, we withdrew those requests and were simply asking to use the gazebo, and then to have the availability of Cape Park to use for the concert, for music, and for the event of that evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak to this permit, public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have any questions? Brian?
What kind of games were you looking at in the beginning? What were you planning, cornhole or?
Yes, yeah, lawn games.
Lawn games.
So cornhole, we were definitely thinking cornhole, and that was pretty much the only thing that we were going to bring and kind of provide, and then with the thought that some people might bring some games similar to that. But that was the original thought.
And I know that the board was very concerned about fires and grills. Does the board see any reason why they couldn't bring a picnic lunch? Just a question, I mean, I mean.
I think what we have in front of us is just a concert. I think that our parking rec director felt, starting to have games down in Coney Park started a precedent, and that she really wants any of those kind of activities, if people want to do them in rent areas like the Pavilion, that they happen down at Foss Field instead of Cape Park.
Yeah.
And I think that was the reasoning, you know, because you let one, and the next one says you did it, and Cape Park really is not a place for athletic or games. And I think that was the reason. And thank you very much for being willing to move those from your agenda.
Oh yeah, it's our pleasure. We're, the main reason that we wanted to use Cape Park is for the gazebo, and so we're very happy to adjust our expectations. And just beyond that, I just want to personally thank all of you for serving as Board of Selectmen members, and I've never had the opportunity to say that, but on behalf of these churches, on behalf of our church, we're very grateful for your service. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you for the comment. Does anybody have a motion?
I can make the motion. Motion to move to approve a temporary event permit, the Church United B Free Church, Calvary, Wolfboro, Melvin Village Community Church, First Congregational Church of Oscepee, Wolfboro Bible Church, to host a concert in Cape Park on August 6, 2021, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your permit. Next item on the agenda is public input. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to give public input? Come on up, state your name for the record. And if you can pull that mic over, hopefully it's on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Is that on?
I don't know.
I think it's on.
Is it on for all sec?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Not quite as tall, is it? That's okay. Thank you, I didn't want to break anything. I'm here to request that you reconsider the parking signs on Clock Road. I understand that there was an issue at the beach last year, and it was a serious, it was a serious issue of overcrowding, and there were a lot of cars that were parking down around where the beach, the beach is, between there and Clipper Drive, and in that area, there was a lot of heavy parking. I live a few hundred yards up the road, the cars never got as far as our house, and going in the other direction, they didn't go as far as the signs are placing them. I think that it causes a real problem for many of us. I know it does for me and for my family, because I have a very large family, and when we get together, it tends to be at our house. I mean, we're in the high twenties now, as our grandchildren have significant others, and when we have Christmas holidays, all the different special events is held at our house. I've also had, our kids have gotten married in our yard, they've had wedding receptions in the yard, we have had anniversary parties, and all different birthday parties for significant. And we've invited people to come and to share, and I've done, as some people know, some political picnics too in my yard. We tend to park, and we control the parking, but we have to park some on the street, because as most of the house is on Clock Road, we have very short driveways, and if anyone has more than two cars coming, we have to park on the street. I think there are ways that this can be dealt with. I think the problem with the beach needs to be dealt with at the beach, and, or maybe just have parking in areas where you can't get totally off the pavement, parking just on one side. Maybe it could be limited to just one time of the year, although that's not going to help me with a wedding that we have scheduled for next year. A granddaughter wants to get married in our yard. But I think that to stop the whole street from having parking on it is an issue, and I know that we worry some about whether there are two tires around the pavement, or not two tires on the pavement. I think if the cars, if this is a speed problem on the road, and we do have some people who do go pretty fast on our road, most of the neighbors and the people who live there do not, but we do get people sometimes going too fast. We control the speed too. Make it 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour or something, and post it, because people do occasionally go too fast. But it is a residential neighborhood, it's a dead-end road, and we've had no issues with people parking on our streets, on Clock Road, in our neighboring streets in the past. And I think it's a real hardship on the people who live there to say that we can only park in our driveways when so many houses don't have much of a driveway. It's saying nobody can come and visit you. So I am hoping that you will be willing to reconsider that, and look at, maybe talk to the neighbors to come up with a way that we can deal with the situation in a way that doesn't impact taxpayers and residents who live on those roads.
Can you just state your name? The secretary isn't here, is it going to do it from recording?
Edie Damaris.
Thank you.
You want me to spell the last name?
Thank you very much for your public input.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to give us public input? Seeing none, we'll move on over to the bulk vote, and we had sent out to us an intent to cut, and so I would like to amend the bulk vote to C, intent to cut. Can I, I'll make a motion that we add an intent to cut to the bulk vote. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The bulk vote, July, as a manifest, July 9th is $56,643.11. The July 16th is $481,637.13. There is a 2021 bond issue, electric conversion project, and dock repair project. We talked about that bond at the last, or one of the prior meetings, and we have this intent to cut. Does any board members have any comments or questions? Can somebody give me a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bulk vote, including items A and B, and then in the amended intent to cut permit that was added on to it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are appointments. And the first one is the EDC. We have the resignation of Alana Albee as an alternate, and we have a request for Dominique Endicott as an alternate, with his term expiring March 2021. And Dominica is not here. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dominique Endicott as an alternate, her expires March 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next appointment is for the library trustees. These are all alternates, and there are three of them. The first one is Deborah Long Smith, then Steve Farley, and then Nancy J. Bell. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I don't see any of them there. These are always a one-year term, and it will expire July 2022. Can I have a motion?
I can make the motion to approve Deborah Long Smith, Steve Farley, and Nancy J. Bell as alternates to the Board of Library Trustees, with a term expiring July 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is the financial report.
Good evening. It's hard to believe we're six months already through the year. As of June 30th, we should be at 50% spent. We're at 51.6, which is slightly above the six-month average, but I do not see any items of concern at this point. Our revenues are about 40%, but some of those are more year-end, so again, I do not see an issue with that. And the other funds are targeting right where they should be at this point. I've been made aware of no areas of concern, so no news is good news, I guess.
Does any board members have any questions or concern? I just have one question. Do you know when the municipal aid share revenue comes in, and the meals, rooms and meals, does that come in?
I think it's this next coming quarter.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Next item on the agenda is the Capital Reserve Funds, one request for the wastewater treatment plant, and another one for the Public Works Garage Facility, and then I think he has another item he's going to talk to us about. Dave?
Hello. Yes, so basically, we are looking at spending funds from our capital reserve funds in accordance with, you know, the appropriations and the, the way it's worded. So on the building maintenance, you have memo, looking for two issues to be at the garage. Came upon us quickly, and we didn't have time to put it in the budget, so that's why they're here now. One's a safety issue. We've got, we're in a kind of a neighborhood there, and some of the mechanics have noticed kids playing in this area, and we're concerned that somebody could get trapped in there. So kind of safety issue. The other one is just computers, updated software, it's causing all kinds of problems. We're kind of a no-brainer, but we had to come through you guys first, so that's one. The one on the wastewater treatment plant, I don't know if you want to vote on that first, or do we have to vote on them, or is it just a?
You should vote on them independently.
Why don't we do these, each one?
Do you have any questions about that one?
I have one question on the chain link fence. It says in our notes that you're looking for $7,500, but the PO says $7,350.
Yeah, I tend to round up and have a little contingency, so if we, he has to do some fuss work in there, you know, because it's, something's unexpected, we're going to have a little extra, so that's why I put it up.
Okay, just wanted to make sure when a motion came, we did the right one. Let's start first, can I have a motion? Let me do this. Does anybody have any questions about these transfers from the Capital Reserve account for the following items? The first one, the wastewater treatment plant, Capital Reserve, does anybody have any issues, comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
David, on this wastewater treatment plant, the lighting and the conduits and everything?
David, on this wastewater treatment plant, the lighting and the conduits and everything, those will not have to be moved again when we start to rebuild the facility? Is that?
The answer is absolutely not. So that's, but that's kind of a separate one.
This is outside the purview of the.
We have both of them together. I started with the wastewater treatment.
Oh, you're doing them both together?
I'm doing this one, then I'll do the next one. This is the wastewater treatment plant. We have two documents, Dave.
We have two different ones.
Okay.
So that one, the major upgrades that are coming will not, this is being done, so it won't have to be disturbed. So these conduits will all be put in.
That's all I want to know.
And it's.
Wasn't really marked on the plan that I have that I saw anyway.
It's again, we're not spending a lot of money in engineering. This is kind of the design bill. I'm trying to save some money in terms of not over engineering it. But the big project will have this taken into consideration. I was with the engineers yesterday walking the site and making sure all this work is will be supplemented, not have to be redone.
I have one question. Are these dark sky lights that are going to go down?
Everything's every dark sky compliant. And we're also looking at a gate because it's a, it's a there man seven days a week. So even on weekends, someone's there. So and sometimes at night someone's coming in, it's dark. And I realized how bad it was when I was out there at night. So I said, we got to get this done soon and we can't wait for the big upgrade. And a big upgrade could be delayed because of funding. You know, it's a big project. So this is something I felt the money we had left in the cap reserve was critical. This was critical. Then the next thing I was working towards is critical also, the sludge truck. Right now, all the sludge we produce gets hauled off site in a 9,000 gallon truck, noon in. And we thicken it and it's pulled out. But the way the site is, he pulls straight forward up to the end of the site and then he has to back all the way out. And it's not a straight, it's got a kink in it. And now Filterbed Road is beginning busier and busier with the boat traffic and it's getting more dangerous. And I'm quite concerned that at some point, one little mistake could be a problem with a loaded truck. We're looking at doing a loop road. But then, I don't know, I think Jim might have told you more recently, just last night, we had a situation at the effluent storage pond in which I think, I see you have pictures there, but just to explain to the public, part of our facility, after the water is treated, it goes up to an effluent storage pond. And it's a 90 million gallon pond that in the summertime, we draw it down with spraying and then it fills up over the wintertime. And at the end, the way the water goes, it's discharged on a catwalk that's supported by utility poles and it goes out a distance of over 100 feet. And it's at the end, it drops into the pond, which is about 25, 30 feet deep. So the supports for that were installed in 1975 and it was part of, again, this major upgrade. We have a lot of infrastructure that's, you know, 45 years old. And this apparently had a defect in one of the legs. And then last night with the wind and whatnot, just was enough to boop. And what's happened is we've had a partial collapse. So that catwalk, which is what carries the pipe, which is a steel pipe out to the end, is now kind of dangling. No one's in danger, no one got hurt, no other problems are, but we have to address it quickly. So I haven't been able to put any numbers together yet. Just for the record, we have notified Primex, we've notified New Hampshire DES, and I have a team of consultants coming tomorrow, including GZA, who are the consultants for the dam. So we're working within a dam. So we got to be very careful for the integrity of the dam. I have two sets of structural engineers coming up because I'm very concerned about, right now it's still stressed, it's twisted. And to do any demolition on it would be dangerous. So we got to figure out with the stress points how it should be supported. And and then also, long term, I don't see us replacing it. I've always had a thought of that water comes out, it discharges and right underneath is where we take it out. So it's like short circuiting. So I always wanted to kind of push it. So this is kind of going to maybe force that upgrade. So we'll have to do a temporary fix to get the water away from the pipes and then we can take the rest of that structure down. I think if we can disconnect it safely, my hope is that we can wait on the demolition until we can dry the pond up next year. Because after we get the RAB site on, we'll be able to dry this up and it'd be much easier to work in the dry with an excavator than trying to do a crane into the lake. Did you get a look at it? Yeah. So Luke came and took a look at it. It just would be too difficult and not really necessary to do any repairs. It's just now I got to disconnect it and then put it into the pond. And I'm nervous about that. So we're going to get some information tomorrow. So I'd like to have authorization to use monies within the cap reserve fund as necessary to to address this concern and make sure it's stabilized and something that can get through the winter. And then if there's any major upgrades, it'll be, you know, part of next year's authorization.
So let's start with that. You're asking us for emergency authority to use money from the wastewater treatment plant capital reserve to address the catwalk at the storage pond.
You did a great job. That's a good summary.
Okay. And that's what he is. I'll make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we've taken care of that. Now we're going back and does anybody else have any other questions about the wastewater treatment plant with the electrical and the sludge haul road? Brian?
Will the lights be sensor lights that go on when somebody shows up or are they on all the time?
No, they're going to be activated. Some will be security lights will be on by motion tents and others will be as they're coming in, they can hit a switch. They're going to be programmed so they can get the lights going because sometimes they take a little while to warm up. So they can, you know, hit it on a minute before. So they'll have a program to be able to turn them on when they come in the gate. They'll be only not, the whole place won't be lit up all night, just security lights. But when someone has to come in either early in the morning or late at night or, you know, during an emergency, they'll be able to go on automatically.
Anybody else? So when we make this.
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
On the estimate for the redoing, this one that we have here.
That's the next one we're coming to.
Oh, it is?
Yes. I'm going to.
Oh, okay.
I want to get, because we're asking, what I have here for the wastewater treatment plant capital reserve, we've got the electric site lighting for 99,984. And we have the upgrade to the sludge haul road and sludge compact area for 42,000. Does anybody else have any questions on that? Hearing none. Can somebody give me a motion for those two?
Make the motion to authorize the expenditure of 99,984 for electrical and site lighting upgrades and 42,000 for upgrading sludge haul road and sludge compost area from the wastewater treatment capital reserve fund.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And now we're back to the building capital reserve fund, which is the Public Works Garage. And that was the.
I just want to footnote something that's important. Because it was a specific number with that last vote and there was not a specific number with the first vote, just to assure, I'm going to be working with KC to make sure we don't overspend that account.
Okay. If you don't want to use all the money that we made in the second one, feel free not to spend it.
That's exactly my point. If all of a sudden we say, oh, I got to spend more money than I have. I know I have some money, but if it's more than that, then I'll have to pare back the scope of work that was approved. So just so we understand, the account will not be overspent without coming back to you. But we're going to be very careful with that.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Nobody has any problem with that? Okay. So we're back to the Public Works Garage. And Dave, I think this is where you were, the first one, the software upgrade.
Yeah, I know we've needed this for some time, so I'm not against it. But what I noticed here in bold letters on this estimate from All Task Equipment Company, I guess they're the ones who supply the software and everything.
They're sole source, yeah.
Okay. It says, please note, no electrical included in this quote. So there's no electrical work quoted. Is that going to be separate or how is this working?
They.
They said approximately $2,000, but there's nothing in here that shows me an extra $2,000 on the bottom.
Are you looking at the software upgrade?
I'm looking at an estimate from Hall Task Equipment Company.
Yeah, I don't think there's any need for an electrician on site because the electrical infrastructure is all there. It's upgrading.
But that's their typical, that's how they work though. If there is electrical, then they will have to pay for that separately. So again, at this point, I was expecting any electrical. If it's minor, we can cover it with the overall regular budget. If not, we'll have to do, you know, I'll tell the gym about where we get the money from, but.
I mean, they were specific that it doesn't include any electrical.
No, no. Sometimes they have these proposals with these automatics. Maybe they didn't take it out. I didn't catch it because I think it's just a software upgrade. I don't know why there would be any electrical.
Yeah. And it also states that they don't know until they speak with an electrician. But it was my understanding that this is mostly a hardware and software update, which will finally correct that issue related to the tracking of.
Yeah, I know there's power there, so it'll have to be hooked up.
And the only one I have is when we're looking at the chain link fence, it says the quote is good to 7-1 2021. I hope we haven't had an inflation.
Well, you know, it's pretty crazy out there right now. So but this is a local guy. He's been calling, he's ready to go on it. So tomorrow morning, I will get him going on. I think he's who holds crisis. He wants to get it done.
And in that, we have 150 in a contingent.
Right, that, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions here? So we're looking at taking two amounts. The software is for $14,328.25. And for the chain link fence to protect the area is $7,500. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. You have all that?
Right.
Okay. All right.
Just as a footnote, so the board is aware, in that building maintenance account, it actually has a balance of $250,000 in it. So we're in good shape to be able to get this accomplished without any threat of overrunning.
Thank you very much, Jim, for that. Next one is C, no parking Clark Road signs. And Edie was here. She gave us her issues with it. We also got a, and this is from the notes, that a John Bird at Five Eagle Trace also had an issue with no parking in front of his house. I did run, drive down there today. The signs are spotty. Some are on one side of the road and a long distance before one is on the other side of the road. I did talk to Christine today and ask her whether we had any problem at Brewster Beach. There has been no closing. There is no issue there at this point. We thought it might be a good summer, but I don't know how many of us want to sit at the beach in the rain. So I do know that Kerry Beach has been, has closed once the other, or at least once, I think it was yesterday or the day before. And she said it was closed for an hour and then it opens back up. So I was kind of thinking that maybe what we really should do here, these should be seasonal signs because there's no, we put them up because of Brewster Beach. And I was wondering whether we want to look at about June 20th, which is when the school ends and about when we would open the beach and do it to September 1st or that timeframe and do it from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So people who are having evening parties and stuff, that doesn't affect it. So those are some of my thoughts. Does anybody else have any thoughts or ideas or how would we like to move forward with this? Brian?
I do think, I went down and looked also, and I think the signs do go too far away from the beach. They do. And like you said, I believe that we could have the signs and just say no summer parking certain times. And yeah, and I think they they should be moved closer to the beach area.
I think that some of those signs in the beginning of Clark Road were put up because of the Thursday fairs that are there.
The Thursday fairs are all temporary. They put them up and take them down.
Well, they also, there are some permanent signs on the right hand side going down. They're pretty large too. I'd like to be able to take a ride down there myself again and look at them before I make a decision on them. I'd like to table that until we have all had a chance to go there. That's my feeling anyway. I don't know what anybody else feels. I know you two have been down there. I haven't. Brad has, Luke.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I mean, could we, could we exempt residents of Clark Road from the parking?
I don't know. How does the police deal with that? They, I have a party, I'm exempt. Cars parking there, how do they know?
I mean, if if a resident on Clark Road, you know, called the police station and said, hey, we're going to be having a wedding this weekend, I'm sure, chief?
Hey, Dean.
Luke, what if we did resident only parking or something like that? Maybe the sign could say resident only.
Chief, if, so the parking on Clark Road, if if a resident was having a party on Clark Road and called the police station and said, hey, we're going to be having a wedding this weekend, would it be, you know, if that, would that be enough to alert you to, I mean, you're not going to go there and tow cars that are resident cars?
No, we wouldn't. But the only guy that can give that permission is sitting right there.
Okay.
So what they would have to do is they would have to contact the town manager. He's the only one that can authorize a waiver of variance for town ordinance. For example, a boat breaks down and they need emergency docking, he can authorize that. I can't.
Okay.
But he would contact us and and we would, we would wave off. So I don't, I don't see an issue there. It's just people have to know that they can always call and ask for an exception of policy, which is common.
Would the board consider having signs that say Clark Road Resident Parking Only? That keeps.
I don't.
Or is that too confusing for people?
I guess I would prefer to make them seasonal, get them down. We have seasonal signs going up. I will, let me do Brad and then I'll get to Dave. Brad, how do you feel?
Yeah, it's, I kind of agree. I think the only way to really do it is going to be the seasonal thing from a certain date to a certain date, you know, for either like July 1 through Labor Day or something like I don't think there's any way, because I initially thought, well, you could have, just have the sign say no parking on the street for Brewster Beach visitors. But then like you said, how do you distinguish between somebody that's at the beach or if they're visiting, you know, neighbor at the house and the driveway's falling, they're just parking out in the street? There's no way of knowing. So I think we'd just have to kind of bite the bullet and put it in, you know, date certain. And that would be about the only way we'll be able to control it on our end, I think. So.
Dave?
I have a different opinion. I think what we did was a reaction to a problem that occurred because of the pandemic and because we were the only municipality that had a public beach that was open. But we had this rush and a really mess last year. This year it's been different because we've had bad weather. So we really haven't had a good measure, but we do know that all the other public beaches are open and we're not, we're now on the tail end of that pandemic. So I think what I would suggest, and the signs were paying for us to put up, to take down and to plow around. So I would like to take all the signs out and for the, after the end of the beach season and then come back next year and work with PD and maybe put four signs up, no parking this side, close to the entrance on either side. Someone's going to park there, they're going to normally close, park close by first. And once they say, oh, no parking this side, would that be enough of a deterrent? So we don't have to have anyone parking and no one, and we don't know if it's going to be a problem anymore because now I think things are different. So I don't, I think we overdid it with the signs. And I agree when Mamie took the calls and I felt bad, I said, oh, yeah, we put a sign there. I went and looked at it because I looked at them all more than once. And I went out with the PD with Mark and struggled with trying to control this problem. And then the problem didn't come. So now it's overkill. So I hate to see us making more signs. And as a minimum, I think everyone should take a look at it first because we don't have to make a decision. So I think they should stay up a little bit longer. And if Edie's party is after, say, Labor Day, we'll take them all on.
I, I think that very definitely, I don't see us at this point changing the ordinance because that's what we do. If we made it permanent that way, I think we're trying to react to the complaints of where the signs are now and that they're too far from the beach. No parking signs that are up today are too far from the beach. And that's where we're getting the complaints, like up by Edie's house. I agree with you. We're not seeing the problem. We have the full Brewster parking lot open and all the other beach parking lots are at full capacity instead of half capacity that they were last year. So I don't think we're seeing the problem there. I think we're trying to find a way. How do we help the residents? We had another one on, on Eagle Trace, and he must have the house right on the corner of Clipper, who also were complaining about the signs, no parking signs being there. So that's what we're trying to come up with some kind of.
But I'm in agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying, so, okay, so we're in agreement.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I agree on that point. But I think we do have some complaints now and we do have signs further away. And we, the board should figure out how they want to deal with that.
We can take them as many down as we want.
Yeah, or we say, call the town manager until we get this straightened out. Okay? The suggestion by Dave was that we put this on the next agenda, that we all take the time to drive down there.
I would make a motion that we table this till the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Anybody not want to do that? I'm comfortable with that. Is everybody comfortable that I let Edie know she has something that she can call the town manager and he's going to waive that parking?
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that needs to go on the next agenda. Next item on the agenda is the request for use of the railroad station space. And I don't see anybody here from Brewster. Jim, do you have any more information on this?
I don't. I, all I have is what you've got in your packet.
I heard, I heard a little about this at the chamber board meeting. Brewster Academy is going to have an exhibit of 200 women who I assume are important women around through history. And they were looking at places to share it with the community. And they're asking whether the town would be willing to have them use the railroad station from October 13th to November 13th. I did check. The garden club, which who is selling wreaths will not start until after the, the date. There is also a request that maybe some of the photographs be put up here in the great hall. I would have no problem if it was on the easel. We don't really tack things up onto the wall, but we've got plenty of space where we could put some easels and some ways to put it up without nails or something into the walls.
Seems like we need more information.
Wonder, or does it really, does people want us to bring them in? Or are we comfortable with what we have? Or?
Well, they're not looking to get in the space till October 13th.
How much viewing are they going to get in the great room?
What?
How much viewing will they get here?
Well, I think the majority of it's going to be down at the train station, but I think they'd like to put some up here.
I don't have any problem.
Up to the board.
I think it's great. I think Brewster's been a good partner. And I think this is, I'm sure the kids, the students will be involved. So I think it's great.
Okay.
I was going to say, would they, do we have them fill out an event permit to be able to utilize the properties for that? Maybe not so much down at the railroad station, but at least here in the great hall, if they're going to do, put display out and if they're going to, she talked about having a, a talk series that accompanies the exhibit in the great hall. I would, you know, it doesn't have a date yet for it. But I think if that part happens, we have to have a event permit to, for that to happen here, I would, wouldn't.
They'd have to rent, they have to fill in a form to rent the room. Yes.
Yeah, right.
I agree with that. I don't, I don't care. October 13th, October 13th through November 13th down at the train station, we don't have anything in there. I don't see any reason to have an issue. I did check about the wreaths. And then send them that's okay. And then if they want to do any of this other stuff up here in the great hall, they need to reserve the room, fill out the permit, and that would come before us. Brian?
I would have appreciated if they sent a representative to explain something. I mean, they're asking, if I'm going to ask for a favor from the town or for, you know, a request to do something, I would show up and I would ask in person.
Well, it's up to, it's up to the board. That's what I mean. That's what Dave is absolutely saying the same thing, that he's having a hard time doing it without them here. Luke said he was fine. I don't know where Brad is.
We got plenty of time. We can request them to come in and just table it.
Is that where the consensus is with the board?
Let's table it.
Yeah.
All right.
I was wondering, did it look like Mary might have something to say on this? Did it kind of look like you?
Okay, I have a motion to table this and put it on the next agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. All righty. Next item on the agenda is an appointment, short-term rental planning board update. I did read this. I did send an email to Kathy Barnard. And the sentence that made me recommend that she first go to the police commission was this sentence, "to pursue modifying the police department's policies and practices." And that's not under the Board of Selectment. That's in Police Commission and the police chief needs to deal with that. And Kathy has asked, the head of the planning board has asked that we table this and remove it and allow them to go to the police commission first. So does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Oh, do you need a motion to table on?
I do.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
To table the short-term rentals.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Hey, we're getting through this. We're just tabling everything.
Keep moving, Linda.
The next meeting might be longer, but, the next meeting might be a little longer.
Yeah, we're going to have a big problem. Okay, next item on the agenda is the 2022 budget guidelines. And I'm going to turn that over to the town manager.
Good evening. You should have in front of you a draft of the 2022 budget guidelines. It is getting to be that time of year. In the guidelines, you will see that the Budget Committee at their last budget meeting has taken a stance that they would like us to hold as much as we possibly can to 0% increases in the budget. I think that they are going to come out with an official statement relative to that. So we will, we will see where that goes. At this point, a couple of things that we do know, we've been advised, and we always get this every year, that we should have a 10% placeholder for our medical insurance. Next year, we will see the full impact of the New Hampshire retirement system rate increases where they, they went into effect in July 1. That in 20, the 2021 budget for the general fund alone was $140,000 increase. The estimate in the 10% on the general fund for medical insurance is $140,000 as well. We just got the, you just voted this evening on the bond, the general obligation bond for 2022. For the stocks is going to be $108,000. So right there, we're looking at about $400,000 worth of increases. And then when you factor in raises are usually in between the 90 to $100,000 range, that brings us to $500,000. That, that gives us a 3.5% increase in the budget before we even start doing a whole lot of work. And then we're seeing in diesel, we're seeing a 61% increase in the cost of diesel right now and a 50% increase in heating fuel. So we are anticipating some pretty stout increases in our nondiscretionary spending right from the word go. So when you look at the, my recommendation, my, my goal in this budget, when I hand it off to the Board of Selectmen at the end of September, I'm hoping to be at a 5% increase, which a 5% increase is $712,000. The approved budget, and this is general fund, the approved budget for 2021 was a, on the general fund was 4.35% or $619,000. So we are at a point right now where we're seeing costs continually go up and demand for services are, are increasing, as I think you probably hear. I think if we can land this budget proposal from the town manager when I hand it off to the Board of Selectmen at a 5% increase, I think that's going to be a, a solid budget. We will be making some document changes as we move into the budget. Casey and I and Amy will be sitting down on Friday, having a meeting to try and get all of those items coordinated. Other than that, I believe Amy has got the draft letter ready to send out to the agencies. Prior to that, I can try to answer any questions that you may have. The other thing that I did put in here for your viewing was currently the 12-month increase on Consumer Price Index from the Northeast region is 4.6%. So that's, that's another matrix to be able to look at that 5% as a rational number in my mind. Any questions you have, I can try to answer them for you.
Board members? I'll make one. I thought this was well put together. It's a clear direction. And I have a clear understanding of how you're asking your department heads to put their budget and who's going to calculate what. I thought that was very helpful. I will make one comment about the Budget Committee looking for a 0% increase. That's saying that they want us to stay at a default level budget because that's what the default, a default budget would be. And that, and with inflation 4.6. I think that's going, is going to be an interesting exercise we're going to have with the Budget Committee. I do, am I correct, Jim, that we need to set the date of September 22nd as our first budget meeting for our agencies? That is not the date of our September meeting.
Yeah, so that's a question that I have for you. Do you want to receive the budget books and have the agencies, hopefully the complete budget book, and the agencies present to you on a separate night? Or do you want them to present to you on a normal board meeting night?
There's the question.
I don't mind a meeting just for the budget stuff.
You don't mind that?
No.
I don't either. It almost is easier than to have a regular meeting go later, is my feeling. How does everybody?
As long as we have food.
Ah, we'll start off with food. You're right, Luke.
We'll get that schedule worked out.
Yeah, you got to, we have some money left in our miscellaneous fund that we can take care of. All right.
So that, if we did that, we, so we are scheduled to meet September 1st and September 15th. So we could either do the 22nd or the 29th. That would be a Wednesday.
Well, your letter said the 22nd.
Correct.
And I think this may be last year's because it says, we're looking for, no, established the 2022 guidelines.
So there are a couple of.
Okay, all right.
Day errors which Casey called on me today.
Okay, you'll take care of that.
We are on it.
Okay. The, the question with the board is, do we want to do it at 6:00 or 6:30? And we also have to agree that we're going to use go-to meeting and the agencies can give us their presentation that way.
Yeah, and Luke probably knows, Brian may not. A lot of these agencies travel a long, very long distance to present for, you know, a five-minute presentation. So it makes some sense if we can continue to utilize that go-to meeting for them. Because they go to all of these different communities. And if we can make something a little bit easier for them, I think we should.
Does anybody have any issue with that? I don't. Okay, so we'll do that go-to meeting. And do you want to meet at 6:00 or 6:30?
Personally, I'd rather meet at 6:00.
How long is it going to be?
An hour?
Depends on who's presenting and what it is, how much argument we get.
6:00 is fine.
6:00.
And the Budget Committee, I believe they are planning all of their budget meetings at 6:00.
We usually do with our budget meeting. That's why I ask that we go at 6:00. All right.
6 o'clock.
Does that give you enough direction on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any other comments for Jim on this?
Have we decided 22nd or the 29th?
22nd.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. And the agencies, we use, can use go-to meeting. Or if they'd like to come, they can come in person. Their choice.
Absolutely. I'd just say, do I have one other comment for the budget process? It's going to be very difficult for the departments to really hold downtime. I think we're going to do well if we can hold it down, you know, the whole thing to 5% because, as we all know, anything to do with plastics, steel, obviously fuel, things like that have gone astronomical this year. You know, whether they're going to level out next year or not, we don't know. But, you know, so it's going to affect, you know, any of the supply, a lot of the supplies that our departments use, you know, parts for the highway department, for the repair garage. All these prices are up, you know, drastically. So just kind of a general statement and what I'm going to expect to see coming forward.
Yeah, I think that's why we're, we want to see Jim bring it to us at 5%.
You're going to do well to do that.
He promised us. Anybody else have any questions? Comments for Jim? All righty. We're moving on to the next item. It's the beach forum. And I had Amy kind of put this together. We're talking about really the regulations of the parking lot, but they affect the beaches. And the first question I have for you is, how long do we want to let each person speak? Do we want to control the time? Do we want to three, five, or let them go as long as they want?
I think we generally have three minutes limit. No more than, well, we're there just for that. But I would say three minutes.
I would, too. I mean, you could say a lot of stuff in three minutes, so.
I'm good with three minutes.
You know, we'll say three minutes, but, you know, we're not going to have timers there.
Right.
That's going to be my general, you know, we could, wasn't it, one of the heads of the, Dick Hamilton on the, on the planning board had one and he turned it upside down.
A little hourglass. Hourglass I can bring. I think it's three minutes.
And are you in agreement that we let everybody have a chance to talk before we let anybody have a second turn?
Yeah.
We all in agreement with that? Okay. We had our, one of our prior meetings said that we were not going to have, we were going to allow people from other towns. And I was wondering whether we shouldn't have a sign-in sheet. And on that sign-in sheet, we would want their name and the town. Does that make sense? So we can kind of divide out. And when they speak, we're going to ask them their, to state their name and the town they're from?
They need to, they need to definitely tell where they live.
All right. Anybody have any issue with that?
I think just their name and the town. I don't care about what street they live.
No, I'm town. I've got town.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want them, do we want any written comments to come in? People do not want to speak? Are they going, do we want to allow them to hand us a written comment that we read? We are going to, we have given them the opportunity for some people. We are going to, we have given them the opportunity for some people to send in emails, which we should read into the record, is all, everybody agreed on that?
Should we limit the length of the written comments? What if somebody sends you a 10-page document they want you to read?
Well, what do you want? Or do we want to just put them in the record?
You like to read? You like to read?
I like to read, I don't mind reading, but.
Or the other thing, we can just say, oh, written emails and stuff are part of the record, I, you know.
Yeah, might got to be a way to do it.
Okay, so we're going to just attach them to the record. Okay, the next issue, and I did look it up.
Linda, how about you read, or we can read them at our discretion, something that is very pertinent.
I, yeah, I'm fine. I would like, if I'm running the meeting to somebody, if we have to read something, do the reading of the stuff, so I can keep it together and who's talked and stuff like that. So, when we get to that, if there's something pertinent, I'm going to look for one of you to read that section that you feel is pertinent. All right? Is that okay? Does that do it for you? All right. I went back and I looked at whether we need to form a, form a committee, and this was, I had to go back to what was voted on, and what was voted on was to see if the town will, will not vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to amend the below section of the Wolfboro Beach Ordinance, and that was about Brewster Beach. And at the bottom of that petition Warren article, it said, "And to direct the Board of Selectmen to establish a committee of volunteers to study the use of the town beaches and propose a unified plan for them." That whole Warren article failed. So, the question, I think, before we get to the meeting is, do we want to form that, a committee to meet and give us recommendations, or do we want to do it from the public input?
Public input.
Well, obviously, it needs to be an odd number, five or seven. Seven's a lot of people to try to get together. So, I would think more like five, myself.
You want to form a committee? The question is
Well, personally, I don't think we need one, but, because we've already set up our ordinances, as far as which beaches are, do what, and that was voted on by the public. If you want a committee, I would think you don't, you don't need more than five people.
Well, I'm asking whether you want to form the committee.
I'm with Dave Ford. I think that this is going to change going down the road, and I think if we form a committee now, we might not need it next year.
I, I see the committee forming, the Board of Selectmen getting a Warren article out in the 2000, in 20, on the 2022 warrant, if we're going to make any changes to what is already existing. Because what they're, what they asked there was a unified
So, can we wait until after the forum and then decide whether we need a committee at that time?
I guess, we can. I was thinking that the public should know. That's my feeling. We had talked about a committee, there's a committee in this Warren article, even though it didn't pass. That's why I'm bringing it up. I'm wanting people to see what they feel about it. We'll get a lot of public input. At one time, I was thinking, you just send that information over to a committee, but I'm, it's going to be hard to pick a committee. That's where I'm starting to think of, but I'm more than willing to do that, but I think I'd
Isn't it something that we can add to forums, that, you know, ask the public at that time? Do you, does the public think that we should have a committee that monitors our beaches, that, that helps with decision?
No, they're not going to monitor the beaches. That, that committee is just going to give us the recommendation for a Warren article, is my feeling, unless I'm, I'm wrong here. Luke, I'm not going to let you sit there tonight.
No, I'm thinking, you know, I, I think we should, I guess we should have a committee. I just, I, I know this is a pressing issue. I don't want to see it get, you know, maybe a committee of fives, that it is, you know, not too many people that could actually, if we're going to get this done and get it on the 2022 warrant, you know, we need to get moving on it. So, we're going to get all this good information out of this, out of this public testimony. So, it would be a great opportunity to roll it right into a committee, so they have something to work on right away. So, I'm, I'm fine with it, yeah, I'm fine with a committee and maybe, maybe five, is my idea.
Brad?
Yeah, the only problem I see if we do a committee is, I wonder if we'd be able to keep it unbiased, I guess, because my gut kind of tells me that the people who are going to volunteer for committee might be the, the ones that wrote these original Warren articles, which are very, wanted to be restrictive with the beaches, and they, and I think you could have a kind of a biased approach to the thing right up front. Whether we'd be able to control that or not, and I don't say we need to control it, but, you know, I think it could be an issue, I guess, there is what I'm saying, so, I'm kind of, you know, thinking, with that being said, I kind of think that, you know, the board ourselves here might be better off to handle the, the whole thing and, you know, have this forum, analyze the data we get from it, all the comments, and sit down with a, you know, maybe have a work session ourselves outside of a meeting or something like that, to really go over just on the ordinance here and do what we want to do with it.
I'm with you, Brad. I started thinking about how in the heck we would choose the committee, knowing the number that started coming in, who wanted to be on it before we thought about the public hearing. And, you know, I, I just think it's going to be very hard. Do you exclude the people who wrote those other petition Warren articles? Is that really fair? And I, that's where I started to have the problem, and thinking that maybe we just take all this public input and that we take a couple of meetings. We do a work session, and then we will open up and have another meeting, maybe at the Great Hall, for anybody who wants to give us input and do it more as us doing it and keep on, at least once or twice, getting more input as we narrow down what it is.
I would think after the public forum and down the road, if we decided we wanted to have an ad-hoc beach committee, like the ad-hoc dock committee, something that met once in a while, evaluated things, that would be okay. But for right now, I don't think we need a committee to decide what's happening.
But we can also ask at the public hearing if, if people think that we should have a committee.
That's, yeah, I, I said that too.
To the other part, I mean, I mean, I've heard people say, what the hell are you guys doing? We already voted on all that stuff. Why are we, why are we having a committee?
I agree with both of you. That's why I think we don't need a committee. I don't think we need a committee.
We already voted on what we wanted, so some people are going to say, what are you doing, wasting our time? And that's going to happen. And we know, we may get, hardly anybody show up unless we're giving out free ice cream or something.
Well, I guess we'll know
You know, I mean, people, people this time of year are just not up for meetings all the time. Certainly have enough. But, that's my feeling. I don't, yeah, we've already set up this meeting, let's listen and see what the people want to do and decide, personally. Like, I agree with Brad.
How do people feel about that?
Yeah. I mean, they've already voted, so.
I'm fine with that.
A lot of them I've talked to said, why, what are we, why are we rehashing this?
We're rehashing it because there is a Warren article, and that there was a real request on, on the part of the public, and my guess is, if we don't at least spend some time, and even if we do, we may have some more petition Warren articles coming up. Brett, are you okay? We'll go.
Yeah.
Then we'll kind of take a consensus of the group at the meeting and see if we want to do a committee. What I'm looking for is, is for, by the time we get to the end of November, that we are able to write some kind of a Warren article. If not, maybe in December or so, but I'd like, I think that if we're going to make any changes, we need to get a Warren article on this year's agenda. Okay, anybody else have any other business?
I had one question for the Town Manager. Jim, it was brought to my attention, I had a constituent that went online and was looking for all the members of the ZBA, all the members of the Planning Board, all the members of the Budget Committee, and said that they couldn't find the names of all those people on those groups easily on the, on the website. Said, didn't know who was on what, and they thought that public should have a right to know at least who's on the board. Not any contact information, anything, but just who's on the board.
It's, it's right in the front of the town report, right after the dedication.
It is, and I explained it to them.
Everything is there. I know that.
And they also said that they could find the names by going to the minutes, but they said, you go on the town website, you see the Board of Selectmen, they're there. You go, and you see the Police Commission, you can see all the people's names, and they just thought that it should be just as easy to find those people also.
Bad idea.
The, the front of the town report will have that years, like last year's had 2021, I mean, 2020, didn't have the voting of the 2021, and I, I agree with Brian, and I think we've just hired somebody.
Yeah, so he, he makes a good point. I just opened up, for example, the ZBA. It, it gives the staff contacts, but it does not give the elected officials. So, we do have a new IT person on board, ITIS, Information Systems. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will get that corrected. Going through a couple other ones, and you're absolutely right, it does not show them. So, that's very helpful information. Thank you.
And if they have town email addresses, that should be there, because then it comes through the filter of the town. And I, I know, I have no problem with my town email address being there. I don't know.
I have, I have one question for Chief Rondo, too. Chief, McKinney Park, is it someplace that's visited from time to time?
You mean by the general public, yes.
And by the Police Department, too?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Only because I went down there a couple of times over the last couple of weeks, and there was some things happening that weren't allowed on the rules and regulations of the beach. So, best plan, just call, talk to the Police Department if something like that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other business? Hearing none, I'll start down with Brad. Committee reports?
Yeah, let's see, last night, we had a Planning Board meeting. Pretty much, it was a work session. We went over all of our subcommittees, gave reports. A lot of the subcommittee's been working on some of the proposals that we're going to, they're going to be working on for the warrant, stuff for, for, for March. For Community TV, we had a meeting this morning. We've actually added, we voted in two new members to the board. They feel good about that, that we're getting some more people involved, involved with that, so we're, we're pretty happy about that this morning. And as you guys have all seen, there was a letter handed out here from the Friends of Libby. I was asked by two members of the, the Friends Board to meet with them yesterday afternoon, which I went up and met with them to go over some ideas they had on, you know, making, you know, another presentation to us on a, on an MOU that I believe will be coming along shortly. Mr. Penio hasn't seen it yet, but I kind of saw a draft version of it yesterday. They're going to, you know, tweak it some and send it along, and, you know, kind of see where it all falls from there, so. And get into that during next month. I would, I would assume that that would be one of our topics for agenda items there, so, that was, I think that was it for me.
Dave?
I had one meeting, Conservation Commission. They, that's a pretty active group. They've, they're doing a lot of rail trail stuff, they're putting up a lot of new signs, they're building parking lots. It's been a busy group.
Okay. I attended the Chamber Board meeting. I attended two meetings of the Friends of Pop Whalen. They're busy working on how they're going to kick off their campaign, and I was at an EDC meeting yesterday, and I'll let Brian fill you in on the EDC. Luke?
I attended the Police Commission meeting and was at the zoning board meeting this past Monday.
The EDC meeting, I thought they are starting to shift gears, and they're talking more about being more active and less cerebral, which is a good thing. They're going to try and focus on short-term and long-term goals that they think will help the town. They talked a lot about social media and having the optics of the town look good when people look for Wolfboro online. They're concerned about some of the town Facebook and community websites, and that people will find them and see arguing and bickering and complaining and stuff like that, that reflects negatively on the town. And I explained that we do have a new IT person, and that I thought that a good thing to do would be to add to our website, if possible. Some town websites you go to, and you can actually see slideshows of events that have happened in the town over six months, strawberry festivals, this, that, a lot of things. They tell you about points of interest on the town websites and, and other things. And I don't know if we can incorporate some of that into our, our town website, but that's one thing that they were discussing. And I, I mentioned the charrette to them, and they were surprised to hear about it. They didn't know what it was, and Linda did a good job explaining it to them. And so, they're very interested in that, because they think that that would, you know, be something that would, would play into the EDC because of that whole development of that area.
Jim, Town Manager's report?
A few things, and I, I can't remember if this was in the previous meeting or not, but I did attend a meeting regarding Route 28. We're continuing to work on that, so expect more of that going forward. The project from Bickering Corner, too, was originally the Alton Town Line, but now it looks like, based on scope, is going to be terminating at Pleasant Valley. Today, I attended a kickoff meeting for the restoration work and expansion of Pop Whalen. We've met with the architect and some engineers, staff, and had some discussions today. It was a very informative and productive meeting. I believe that the next board meeting, you will actually have the audit report. So, we'll actually have that in a timely fashion. I'd like to thank Casey for getting all of that taken care of. The bond that was discussed, just to give you a, a background on the bonds, the, I'll, I'll paint the picture for the docs, that was an $850,000 bond. The interest rate, as documented, is 5.1%. However, because the investors were able to get somebody to buy a premium portion of the loan, it reduced the loan amount by $152,600, which means we will actually be repaying $891,717,000 on the $850,000, which means we have an effective interest rate of 0.95%. So, very attractive interest rate. So, that has been completed, you'll see in your signature packets tonight, some signatures that you need to finish to finalize that. Had a meeting today with Pat Tarpe from the Winnipeg watershed team about the Wolfboro Bay Water Management Plan. We've got some more work to do on that, but it's in process. We may be, we've been asked, the state of New Hampshire has a mobile vaccination unit that they bring around. They've asked us to be able to utilize that at the library. We're waiting on more information, but they may be bringing that forward to the library. Christine's had a lot of people reach out to her about park benches, the desire to want to install park benches. She's at the point now where she's got enough park benches, but the conversation So the conversation that her and I had today, or earlier this week, she's going to try and repurpose those people from donating to benches to lighting for the Bridge Falls path, so that we can get some nice poles between the downtown area and where it goes to Foss Field and transitions into that wood line. Get some plaques put on those for the grateful donors. From that point into the woods, it would be the traditional type of poles. But that's a project that we hope to be coming forward to completion next year. You received a letter from the Libby Museum. I do have a question for you. I did reach out to ALBA Architects about the $2.4 and the $2.9 million estimate as of 2019. It's going to cost about $2,000 to get updated pricing. Not sure if that's something that the board wants to pursue at this point, or if they want to put on hold for a little while. We do have about $80,000 left in that.
For Libby. My gut kind of tells me, if I may, is we know we have another document coming to us, stuff like that. I would say we should wait to see what that, what that is, what our reaction is to it and stuff like that, before we decide if we want to spend out some more funds to update. You know, I think if we, if we end up moving forward with this thing and stuff, then yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to start getting some, some real numbers in front of us. But I think it might be just a little bit premature right now to do it.
Yeah, and I guess I agree with you, Brad. And also, when do we think the final product is going to go out? So we don't want to have to upgrade the numbers too many times. So we may want to look. Anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns?
That gives me the guidance I need. Thank you. And the last thing that I have is, a couple meetings ago, we had a presentation from Mr. Rozenger. Mr. Rozenger presented you the Board of Selectmen with a letter. Just curious how you wanted to handle that. Wanted to invite Mr. Rozenger back in, if you wanted to have a work session to deal with the situation, or what your desire was going forward.
I think we need to respond to him, for sure. I'm not willing to not respond. You'll love this one. We could always meet and address it after the September 22nd meeting. You know, that's a day we're going to be, it'll be a shorter meeting than a regular meeting to, unless somebody, I don't know. It just seems like during the summer to have another meeting. And to put it on to a regular meeting, it may make that meeting long. But it's up to the board. I'm willing to meet on it. I think we owe him something. You gave us some figures on what it was costing, so we do have...
So those figures were exclusively for the burial of the hardware associated with the burial of the line, minus the contractor for digging and the pedestal for the transformer. You do not have pricing for the uninsulated line. My thought on that is, buried is, while it may be a standard that is used out there, it's not the standard that municipal electric department uses. Municipal Electric has chosen to use the insulated lines and have equipment associated with an uninsulated line for 1,200 feet. That is a risk that we would run if we have a failure on that line. Where do we get the parts?
Board members, what would you like to do? Do we want to put it on a meeting?
I think what you said about that September meeting would be great, to put it off to that. And that would give an opportunity for us to look at it some more, look at those numbers, and get back to him so at least he knows we're thinking about it, we're moving, you know, with meeting, discussion about it.
Anybody else?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I do, I do too, yeah.
Yeah, I think that will give us the time and more figures. And if you could just send him an email saying we've scheduled it for that date, that we're working on it. Is that it?
Are we going to request that he attends the meeting?
He will know when we're going to be talking, and he's going to know the date of the meeting. He can decide whether he comes or not. Unless some, unless other members feel that we won't invite him. I think we just let him know when the, anybody feel like we need to invite him? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, any comments from the press? Alyssa, are you there?
Oh, yes, I am here.
Uh-huh.
I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. My screen changed. I don't have any comments at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Any comments from the public? Seeing none?
Yes. Yes, hello, Lynda.
Sorry, Suzanne, I can't see you. Suzanne?
Yes, Lynda.
Yep.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'm wondering, I know the board has talked about this before, what we can do about the acoustics in the town hall for our meetings. Very difficult to hear one another as board members, as well as a participant in the public. I'm wondering if lapel mics might be a solution? And I'm also wondering if the dividers, like they use in banks, could be put up, you don't get an overflow of a crowd, so they could be put up behind the first or second row of public or behind the board. It's not just me. I'm admitting that I have difficulty hearing, but I'm hearing from others on the boards, as well as public people saying to me, we can't hear. We can't hear. And it's not just turning the volume up, it's something to do with the acoustics in the room. And something, please, address this. Something needs to be done about it.
Only thing I can tell you is, the Friends of Music are going to do a study of the acoustics in this auditorium and get some kind of a price tag. And they will also be looking for acoustics in order to handle a musical performance. And so there is some movement on that front, Suzanne.
Well, what I'm speaking, what I'm speaking to is, certainly, music acoustical would be different from public speaking acoustical. And what I'm thinking is to minimize the size of the area around the board and the public, so, like they do in banks, is the only thing I can think of as the way to describe it. So that you're reining in the area, and then perhaps the acoustics would work better. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to give us any public input? Hearing none. I'd like a motion to go into non-public.
We'll move.
Second?
Second.
Ryan?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Lynda, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There we are.